I'd like to welcome all of you tonight that have joined us. Before we begin, I'd like to remind you of a couple of things we want to do to keep kind of housekeeping rules. First, this is a school board meeting. It's a business meeting, so no comments and questions from the audience are appropriate. We have business we need to conduct, and we ask that you not disrupt the meeting. If you want something to say, we have an open session at the start, a public comment, and there's a sheet up here if you've not signed in. I know one person signed in. But if you want to make a comment in that time period, there is a paper there that you can sign up, and we'll give you that time, and I'll address that a little bit later. So, public comment, you need to sign up and let us know, and then we'll get to that real shortly. Okay? Again, then let's go ahead and start. If you would, we'll do the pledge and then the prayer.
Pledge and謟誓 to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
That we pray. Our Heavenly Father, once again, we're gathered, Lord, in this school board setting for our meeting tonight. Lord, let us be mindful of our students. Let us be mindful of our faculty and staff. Let us be mindful of our parents. Lord, let us be mindful of our community. Lord, we thank you for allowing us to serve. We thank you for the opportunity that it leads us into. We thank you for our leaders of this school. Lord, we thank you for everything that you've done for us so far in life. Lord, most of all, we thank you for Calvary, that we have the freedom to choose you. Lord, we have, heaven is our home because of that. Lord, we thank you once again for loving us. Thank you for your grace. Thank you for your mercy. Lord, let us ever look to you for all of our answers, because we know you are the ultimate answer. We ask all these things in your precious holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, do we have approval of the agenda first? Any additions to it?
I have no additions. We're using a consent agenda format also, and there are several items that are on the consent agenda as listed. And if any of the board wishes to bring any of those items out and place them into discussion, we need to make that public record now.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as is, with the consent items being where they are.
Second.
All right. All those in favor, by show of hands. Motion's carried. All right. They will now go into public comment, and if you would bring me that.
Aaron Smith is here, and he lists his subject of salvation.
Okay. Before we get started, come on up, Aaron, if you don't do. Before we get started, let me say a thing or two about public comment. Each speaker has three minutes. If, for example, you had a 10-minute presentation or something you want us to hear, we'd be glad to take it in writing. Anything you want in writing, we'll be glad to take and look at it, and we'll make sure they look at it. We ask that the public be respectful of the speakers, and that they not interrupt them while they're talking about their item or what they're going to talk about. There should be one speaker for a group. I don't think we have a request that I see for a group. And also, public comment is not a time for debate. It's just simple, we're listening to the public's concerns, and then we take those concerns, and then we'll look at those and talk about them and discuss what we have out there. So, Mr. Adden, go ahead, sir.
Is it three minutes?
Aaron, excuse me. I call him Adam. There's an Adam Smith.
There is. Is it three minutes?
Three minutes, uh-huh.
And I'll keep time, please. I'm not trying to disrespect. If I get three minutes, I'll just let you know.
Gotcha.
All right. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
I'm Aaron Smith, born and raised here. Most of you know me. I'll try to be brief, try to get this all in. As an eight-year-old boy, I was begotten by the Word of God at Swain West Elementary to benefit singing in a little theater. Because a man obeyed God and stood up and preached the Word and told me about the plan of salvation. Didn't accept it that night, but later on that night I got home, and as an eight-year-old little boy, I was afraid to go to bed because I didn't want to go to that place called hell. And I got down on my knees and I accepted Jesus Christ as my Lord and Savior, the best thing I've ever done in my entire life. I love Him. I owe my life to Him. I haven't always done the things I should have done, but you know what? My God left the ninety and nine and come after the one and brought me back into the fall, called me to preach and listen. I love yous tonight, and I love every person, every human being that's ever been created, because the Bible still tells me that they're created in God's own image. I love them, and I want everybody to be begotten by the Word, to hear that plan of salvation. It just disappoints me today in the way our school system has went and the things that we're letting go on, the things that were, the clubs that we're allowing, this jigsaw club and different things. It disappoints me, not because I don't hate any group of people, I don't hate anybody. I love everybody. But we need to get our schools back rooted and grounded on what the Word of God says and not on what anybody else says is right, because a disappointed man wants to die. And then the judgment, and this is the book that will all be judged by. There's no way, there's no getting around it. What's right is right, and what's wrong is wrong. In the days of Sodom and Gomorrah, it was wrong. Lot, his wife, and his two daughters, is what made it out of Sodom and Gomorrah. And then his wife turned back and was turned into a pillar of salt. That's how serious it is that we get our schools back rooted and grounded on the Word of God. What's really going to matter? This is what's going to matter. It's not what I accept, or what y'all accept, or what the world accepts. It's what the Word of God says. And I love you, and I want you to get back to what, if you don't have your King James Bible, hey, I'll buy you one. Read it. We know. I'm not telling anybody anything new. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, that you ain't already heard. You know, and it's my fault too, because this is the first time I've came and spake out against it. But it's time Christian people stood up, stood on the Word of God for what it says from Genesis through Revelation. It's the truth, irregardless of whose feelings it hurts. That's irrelevant anymore. It's irrelevant, it's been irrelevant from the beginning. I love everybody, but I want them to be begotten by the Word, to know that Jesus came born of a virgin, left the best that heaven had, came born of a virgin in a lowly manger, lived a sin-free life, died on the cross of Calvary, was laid in a buried tomb. Reason it was buried is because he knew he was going to be there a short time, on the third day he's risen, sitting on the right hand of the Father, making intercession for you and me. I love and appreciate every one of you. I appreciate the three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Trent Taylor?
I'm Trent Taylor. I was born and raised here in Bryson City. Went to Swain County High School. Lord's laid some scripture on my heart I want to share with you tonight. It's in St. John, chapter 1, verse 1. It says, "In the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. The same was in the beginning with God. All things were made by Him, and without Him was not anything made that was made. In Him was life, and the life was the light of men. And the light shineth in darkness, and the darkness comprehended it not." God gave me this thought on men's traditions, things that men say, things that men do. Something I say today, the right circumstances, the right people come along, it could change. A lot of times, we as men and women, we let money, amen, dictate where we stand. We let people dictate where we stand. But one thing that don't change, it's God's Word. It don't bend, amen. It don't break, amen, to fit what you want it to. It is what it is. You take it as it is. It's the inspired, true Word of God. Every letter, every word, every punctuation, it's inspired, written down by God. This country, it was founded on God. What are we standing on? Are we standing on men's traditions? Are we standing on for people to like us? Or are we going to stand on what God would have us to? That's what God's given me. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. That's all we have, I believe, tonight. Okay. First item is COVID report, and Allison is not here. And I've got that. Do you want to present that?
Yes, Allison had another engagement, and as did Amber Frost. And I've given to each of you, I believe, a copy of the email that Allison sent. She wanted to make point that our cases in, the positive cases in Swain County are declining. I think that's in the second paragraph there. She says that Swain County was averaging 100 active cases. Now there are 52. She also made a point in the first paragraph that in the past 30 days, there were 323 positive cases. At the same time period a year ago, there were 71. Allison recommends, from the Health Department, that the school follow, or continue to follow, the Strong Schools NC Public Health Toolkit. There are additional graphs and charts that she has sent with that as well. If there's anything that you, any of you want to ask about or want to draw attention to.
I want to ask about the mask requirement in the Strong Schools with kind of Public Health Toolkit. Can you tell us what that is again?
I think it would probably be best, Kim, if I asked Brandon to come and do that, because he has had his mind wrapped around that much more firmly than I. Brandon? I should say Dr. Sutton. I apologize.
So, the toolkit is still recommending masks. The one thing that did change in the toolkit is now, it has been in the past, if an adult was a close contact, but they were, still had to quarantine. Whereas if students were wearing their masks and they were three foot apart, and both students were wearing their mask correctly, only the sixth student had to quarantine. The other student was not considered close contact. Now, staff, adults, is considered, that same rule applies to adults in the school, in school setting. So now adults, if they're wearing their mask appropriately, would not be deemed a close contact in the school setting. That was the big change in the, I think it came out last Thursday, the updated rule. That was the only change, really. They're still recommending masks, three foot in the building, as long as masks are being worn appropriately.
One of the pieces that has not changed is the fact that quarantine is still expected if there are close contacts. And we have found, and most school systems, I believe, have found in North Carolina, that the mask is one of our greatest defenses against quarantine itself. And that's one of the reasons that I believe that we've been able to see the numbers as far as quarantine are concerned. The other has to do with also the care that our staff are putting into making sure that we are following the guidelines of social distancing.
Students, staff, at this point in time, have done an exceptional job of trying to follow the expectations. Realistically, we've had a minimum impact in our buildings now. We have had COVID. We've had COVID positives. But it's been fairly minimal inside our school buildings.
I gave to each of you also a copy of the numbers according to our tracking. Every person, every student, every adult who has shown symptoms or been referred because of testing positive, our nurses track. Since the beginning of school, we have seen six positives in the pre-K, 30 at East, 29 at West, 41 at the middle school, and 70 at the high school. Those are up to date as of 4 o'clock this afternoon. The total number of positives since August 17th are 176. We've had 16 staff. That 16 is not included in the 176. There have been 929 students that have been affected because of close contact and symptoms. That means that they have either missed some days, or they've been fully quarantined. Our percent positive using those numbers is just under 19%. So that would mean 19% of the students that were referred or went to the nurse or went home, 19% had, were positive cases. Okay? I didn't track the numbers, or I didn't bring the numbers to you from last week, because we had a short week with students in the building. The week before, we had 57 students who were close contacts and 18 positives. That was more in line with two weeks before that. And back into September and August, it may have been a little lower than that. Though, two weeks before now, which would have been a week before last week, we saw a little bit of an explosion happen in different places, and the numbers escalated on us. But after talking to Allison, that's the kind of thing that can happen. It can shift quickly, just according to who's been around who. I don't know what else to say, other than those are the numbers. Brandon?
I think it's important to pull out that the contact, close contacts are not necessarily all school-related. We track all close contacts, and they're listed. But then we also list the close contracts, close contacts that are school-related.
That's true.
So we list those by close contact to the person's initials. So of those, some of those are close contacts related at school, but the majority of those are close contacts outside of the school. We had a few cases early on, lunch got us early on until we could work out different lunch, where we had some more, more close contacts at the school level. But the close contacts are a combination of outside of school and in the school building.
Thank you for making that point. And one of the reasons that lunch and some of the other time periods like that have been a little bit of a concern for us is because the mask is not in place at that time. And so the, the social distancing becomes a concern.
I did notice an email we got from the State Board of Education today, that in the state of North Carolina, 108 school districts in the state, only six are optional.
Yes.
And of the ones that are optional, compared to the ones that require a mask, it is three times the number of clusters of COVID that have broken out compared to those that have. So it is, it does work. And to be honest with you, nobody likes them, but nobody wants to see a child hurt or a faculty member, so. Is that it on that?
That's all that I have as far as the COVID report for the county and for the school system.
Okay.
Are there any questions? Don't ask me a question for the Health Department, because I can't answer it.
Oh, man, I think you read their opinion.
Yes.
That you gave us, right?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on, then.
We have several improvement plans. Once upon a time, they were called school improvement plans. As a matter of fact, in the General Assembly, they passed a law some time ago requiring that schools have to have one every year. We have shifted in the past couple of years to something called NC Star, which is basically just an online tracking system that has helped, that has been designed through DPI, and it's helped a lot of school systems. Tonight, I would like for our five schools to present their NC Star improvement plans to you. I've asked for them to be as brief as they can, but at the same time, they're here to answer your questions. So if we can move on with that. Bright Adventures, would you come and present your plan, please?
I guess I can remove this while I'm standing here. Okay, we're going to start with just bringing forth our mission statement that we've worked with our regional coach, Diane Vance, on concerning the leader in me. "We will provide a safe and nurturing learning environment while building positive relationships with students and families. All students are supported in becoming kindergarten-ready through play while encouraging a love for learning." Some of our accomplishments that we wanted to highlight were, beginning with PLCs. There has been a big push with PLCs and the shift in perspective and the drive with that, making sure that our students are gaining from this. Jennifer Shid and Penelope Stewart have taken on the role of leading those PLCs at pre-K. They've done an outstanding job. I can speak for everybody in that. And there's been lots of rich discussions, problem solving taking place in those PLCs as we continually look at our data and decide what to do to help our students achieve growth through all the developmental domains. We've all had a shift in perspective now that I think we knew in the back of our minds, but now even more so, that we're all responsible for each and every kid's success, not just the students in our own classrooms. Another highlight is that we're in the second year of offering the after-school program at pre-K, and we feel that it is going very well. We currently have 29 enrolled, and we use this time for intervention work, as well as just to review the concepts and materials that we're going over on a day-to-day basis during the week. And last year's data showed that children who participated in the program, and this, mind you, was just from January to the end of the school year, because we didn't offer it at the beginning of the school year last year. It was January on. The data shows that 21.2, it shows a growth of 21.2% in social-emotional learning, and that is one of our big rocks at pre-K, using our second step, social-emotional learning curriculum. And this is versus the non-participants, who showed a growth of 8.23%. So, very big growth there with that after-school program. And then with that, that ties into NC Star Goal A4.06, where all teachers are attentive to students' emotional states. Guide students in managing their emotions and arrange for supports and interventions when necessary. And this was a great way to really guide those students further along, not just during the day, but that one-on-work and after-school for social-emotional learning needs. And then we looked at the end-of-year data, particularly in the areas that did not show as high of growth as others, which happened to be math. And we've integrated them in our pacing guide on cycles to ensure that we're adding enrichment and supportive activities to target those areas of weaknesses. And knowing that our Tier 1 math instruction doesn't yield as high a growth in percentages as literacy does, where we have that common instruction in our Letterland curriculum, we've created a common instructional practice to be used in every classroom for teaching numerals, quantification, rote counting, and subitizing. And we're increasing the frequency on which we're observing and assessing by teaming with our assistants to frequently and intentionally observe and take anecdotal records that drive our instruction in targeted areas. So we're using this data to provide immediate feedback to our students via targeted enrichment and supportive activities that we're intentionally planning in our lesson plans each week, and we can see if they're showing growth, or if we need to go down the path of it's time to refer them for testing. Do you all have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions. Did I sure do miss going down there, walking through and seeing that place?
Yeah.
It makes you feel good just to see what's going on. Hopefully, stuff will ease off, and we can get down there and see them.
I know.
I appreciate what you do with them. It's great.
Thank you. We appreciate y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda. Next, we have East Elementary.
I'm Cheryl Sabager, and I am the TLC, one of the teachers over at Swain East. I was a former third-grade teacher. And we have Josh Crisp, who's our fourth-grade teacher. And we're here to speak to you a little bit about the indicators that we've chosen to address this year in working with our teachers. This is where we have one teacher representative of each grade level to be able to speak on behalf of that grade and what the needs are for our school. The first one we have is known as A107, and it's where all teachers employ effective classroom management and reinforce classroom rules and procedures. One of the things that we're doing now that we decided was, we felt that we needed really to be very transparent, not only for parents and students, but for other teachers maybe coming in and observing other teachers, was to have a schedule posted outside our doors so that anyone can come in and see exactly what the teacher's doing and at what time the childrens are involved in those lessons. We found that that was very helpful for other teachers within the building, who may have some planning time and realize, oh, I would like to see this teacher participating or doing this with their students. I'd like to see how that works. And they can feel free to walk into that classroom and observe that teacher. So that's one of the things that we wanted to encourage. Another thing that we have is Classroom Management Plan, and that's where we're having, excuse me, where we have all our rules posted. Teachers have what we call morning meetings in the morning, and they're reminding students every morning, what are some of the expectations that we have for our students and for staff members as we walk down the hallways, as we're working in the classroom. What are some of the things that we expect? What should they look like? We have reminders on the walls and throughout the hallway. So that's really something that we really wanted to focus on as far as classroom management this year. The next one is A401, and this one, the school implements a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction. What we're doing now is, we call it the PLC, but we're calling it the data team meetings. And specifically, again, every grade level meets with colleagues. So all teachers at one particular grade level meet, and what we're doing is, we're actually looking at data. The data that we're looking at varies. We have one that's known as M-Class, which is specifically for our grades K through 3, and it involves some students in the fourth grade. Then we have a new program that we purchased known as I-Ready. I-Ready is working for reading and math. So we're looking at all that data, and what we're trying to do is, we're trying to determine not only the students who are performing below expectations, but those students who are working at, at grade level or above, because those students sometimes are very difficult to maintain in those areas. So we're trying to make sure that we're addressing the needs of all our children. What we found towards the end of last year and starting this year is, we have, every grade level has students with significant gaps coming in. So what we're trying to do is, every team works significantly on what is it that we need to address? We have children right now in second grade who are performing at a kindergarten level. What are we doing to address those needs? What is it that those needs are, and how are we going to get there? So we're setting goals for each grade level, and we're not saying that it's all students, but it's a significant number that we need to address. And a lot of it has to do, because students were not in school full-time last year. We also have what we are calling interventionist, and that is in addition to what is happening within the classroom. The teacher is what we're calling differentiating instruction. So if we have a student who's performing at a second-grade level, we're teaching, all children are receiving that type of instruction. But if we have a child who, in that second-grade classroom, needs kindergarten instruction, that teacher is also providing that instruction to that child, on whatever the needs may be. In addition to that, there is what we call an interventionist, who pulls that child for additional remediation and tries to fill that gap. And we're maintaining data every two weeks. We're monitoring the progress to see what is the next step. Once a child has learned this, we fill that gap. What's the next thing we need to do? There's a lot more. That's just the academic. We're doing the same thing for mathematics. One of the things, too, that we found that we needed to do was, because we're trying to work so intensely with this, that we need to integrate our content. So what we're trying to do is, our science and social studies, we're adding it to our reading content. Some of our science, we're putting that into our math content to try to give us additional time to work with our children, to try to bring them up. We also have a lot of students that, not only are we addressing academics, but we're having to deal with socio-emotional issues coming to school, attendance issues. So we have designated members in our school and in our community who are trying to work with our children. And there's sort of a hierarchy of the And there's sort of a hierarchy of the needs because we know that if a child comes to school and they're just having significant emotional issues, no academic piece is actually going to address that child's need. We can teach them all day, and we're not going to be able to get to them. So, what we're trying to do is we're trying to get our social worker, our counselor, to work with these children to find a place of comfort for them so that we can start helping them with their academics. And then Josh is going to add a little bit more to that.
You hit a home run. So, I'm going to talk about the last three, which is A4.06, which is talking about the student's emotional status. You know, going through this COVID pandemic stuff's been very hard for a lot of our kids. And so, we have Ms. Wiggins on staff, and she's always available for our students. Anytime that, you know, we have a kid that's dealing with emotional issues, she's there. And so, she does the Leader in Me lessons twice a month with our classes. And our teachers are really good about giving extra lessons throughout the week, throughout the month for our kids. B303 is the principal monitors curriculum and classroom instruction regularly, provides timely, clear, and constructive feedback. Ms. Sutton has done a great job of being very thorough in talking to us about what her expectations are. And she's very good about giving us feedback, so... Which is very beneficial because we know exactly what we need to work on at that particular time. And she's very good about asking questions. Why are you doing it this way? Do the kids respond? How do the kids respond this way? So, she's very good at that. And E106 is the school regularly communicates with parents and guardians. And this is my area in the NC Star team. I get with teachers and I ask, I need your social... Your posts that you send to kids, to your parents. If that's remind, if that's class dojo, whatever you do, emails. I need all that information so we can put it in there. Because that's one of the hardest things we have figured out, that parents don't like to communicate. And if they can't communicate, we can't help, you know, we can't get them the support they need at home for their kids to make up the growth that they've missed this year in COVID. So... And we're always sending out Facebook messages. I think Ms. Mathis is over that, and she does a great job putting on Facebook things that's happening in our school. And so, we've done a lot of incentive programs. We're going to be doing a Fall Festival this year. We're going to try to do a dance, maybe, if that's possible, do some other things just to get the community members involved. So, just to support their child. Pretty much it. You guys have any questions? It's a lot of information. It's a lot.
Well, it's a lot of work you guys are putting in to fill the gaps of what's transpired over the past year and half.
Yeah, I don't want to brag on East Elementary because our whole team just dug their, you know, hands in there and did it. So, it's all of us.
None of ours in the day, I'm sure.
Yes, ma'am.
It's our school, our kids.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll tell you the same thing that told Ford. It just kills me that we can't get out and see the kids.
That's it.
That's what... Only reason I'm here, I just love these kids. I'm like, yeah, you like to see what they're doing. I see what y'all are doing.
Absolutely.
And I hate this part. I do. I don't see kids doing stuff and what y'all do. It's so much appreciated. You just don't know how much.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate it.
Quick question. I was just thinking about this, and these plans are child-specific, so they follow the child. Let's say, like you said, the second grader that's reading and participating at a kindergarten level, is that specific plan follow the child from third to fourth to fifth?
We have what is called an MTSS, Multi-Tier System of Support. And that child, actually, what we do is, and that's all of us involved, that involves a school principal, that involves our school counselor, social worker, school nurse, teachers. It involves everyone who works with that child. So, whatever that child needs, it is a team approach. And we're approaching the whole child.
And for me, I teach fourth grade. So, we do iReady, which is reading and math, and also do DIBELS, which tests the kids on their reading fluency, and it'll pull their grade level where they're at. So, if I've got a kid in fourth grade who's reading on a second-grade level, I'll pull stuff that's second-grade specific just to get them, try to get them caught up to fourth-grade material. And that's, we call that Tag Time. So, I said, go ahead.
I'm sorry. And then what we've done is we've actually created a system where teachers can pull material, resources from that, which is what we're saying. If we have a teacher who teaches fourth grade, that teacher can actually go easily find the math, the reading material, and pull whatever it is that they need from that resource. We made that available a few years back, and we've been building on it. So, it's still work in progress, but much better than what we had.
And iReady is really good because it's curriculum-content-based. So, if a child is struggling in, you know, to addition, I can go pull specific addition instruction material for that child, which is really good.
And that's the academic piece, but there's also the other pieces that we need to address before even academics many times. So, that's where that team approach comes in. And everyone who's working with that child is communicating. That's come a long way. Truly has.
One of the probably greatest pieces of this is the communication that's coming between classrooms and other services as well. One of the reasons that we went with iReady is because it allows us to longitudinally track students all the way from third grade up through eighth grade and even into high school if they are, if they're struggling. So, we have that data that transfers with them.
And for the lower grade, you have DIBELS, which is from pre-K all the way to third grade, follows along. It's wonderful for that matter. But thank you for your time.
Thank you.
West Elementary, please.
I'm Lisa Wildrope, and I'm the NC Star Chair, and I'm also the school's speech pathologist. So, and I suppose I thank you for the opportunity tonight. And of course, I just have to write myself down because I get a little scattered if I don't, and it keeps me on target. So, as you know, we are now in our third year of NC Star. We began in 2/13/19. In 2020, our school met two indicators. In 2021, we met four indicators. Currently, we've met two indicators just since the school has started. We're hoping to meet many more as the year progresses. So, as we meet the goals for these indicators, we continue to add more indicators to our plan. Currently, we have 18 indicators, and y'all should have a copy of all those. And right now, we have seven that are given priority. So, there's a lot that we're working on, you know, of those 18, but seven are like the big rocks. So, these include, and I'm just going to kind of name these off and just kind of go through our big rocks, which are seven of them, and I'll be brief. The first one is the A204, which is Curriculum and Instruction Alignment. This involves developing standards aligned units of instruction for each subject and grade level. This is done weekly with weekly Data Team Meetings and the PLC days once a month. Then the A2... Or, excuse me, number two is A4.16. This is Student Support Services. The school develops and implements consistent and intentional and ongoing plans to support student transitions for grade to grade and level to level. Number three is B203, Distributed Leadership and Collaboration. The school has established a team structure among teachers with specific duties and time for instructional planning. I'm going to pull all this together at the end. Number four is B303, is Monitoring Instruction in School. The principal monitors curriculum and classroom instruction regularly and provides timely, clear, constructive feedback to teachers. This would also include, like, our principal observations. Number five is C201, Quality of Professional Development. The school looks at school performance data, aggregated classroom observation data, and uses that data to make decisions about school improvement, professional development needs. This, again, is the Data Team Meetings and the PLC Days. Number six is C304, Talent Recruitment and Retention. The school has established a system of procedures and protocols for recruiting, evaluating, rewarding, and replacing staff. So, the talent recruitment would be Mr. Dills's position, but the retention is sort of us because this is how we keep our staff. So, some of the things that we do, we do some team-building activities. We have this thing called the Woo-Woo Wagon, and it comes down the hall, and it has drinks and snacks in there just ever so often. Currently, we've got a thing outside our principal's door, Ms. Sutton, and it's called our Kindness Clothesline, and it's envelopes, and the teachers are getting ready to put, like, appreciation notes in that. So, you don't know really who wrote it. You might know who wrote it, but anyway, it's little notes in there. And finally, number seven is E106, It's Family Engagement. The school communicates regularly with parents and guardians about its expectations of them and the importance of curriculum of the home. This includes newsletters. The teachers also do Class Dojo. We do parent conferences. We do parent information such as our STEM Night. And we also are getting ready to have a big Fall Festival next Friday. Or actually, it's this Friday, this Friday night. So, as you can see, many of these items were chosen this year and are centered around core instruction to assist our children. By being able to put interventions into place, it makes the student's instruction more individualized, which should then show more student growth. Our goal is to continue to build a core instruction through the use of what was formerly known as PLCs. That was the big word last year, the PLCs, which is Professional Development Communities or Learning Communities. But now, it is now moved to Data Team Meetings. So, you'll hear both of those. The PLCs, which is the Professional Learning Communities, we do those once a month, and the teachers at our school are encouraged to go back to their team, plan that day. We meet with them. Everybody meets as a team, and then they go out and they work on some of their core instruction on those days. Been very valuable. By using Data Team Meetings, we can make use of our data to provide better interventions and provide more individualized instruction. And you heard some of that from our sister school. Our staff has also made great growth with taking data and using data to drive instruction. What was difficult a year ago, such as documentation and taking data, has now just become second nature to our staff. We're looking for a good year and a lot of growth as we make up the ground from the last school year. Do y'all have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Swain Middle.
I am Jennifer Edding. I teach seventh-grade math at the middle school. And I'm really glad to be here. And I think I would like to say that that is our overarching thing for the middle school, is that we are really glad to be here. And we are really glad that our kids are with us and that we have them five days a week, as many of them as they're there, not on quarantine. We've been having, you know, sort of these rotating quarantines going through. But whenever we can get the kids in class, we are excited to have them there. And our overarching picture focuses on the MTSS. So, that is the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support. And our school improvement plan or our NC Star plan, the indicators that we picked, all focus on those particular goals. And I'm not going to go through them specifically, but what we're doing is we're trying to meet each of our kids where they are. We're trying to help them track their data. We're working as a team to track their data. And then we're trying to get them to take ownership of tracking their own data. So, each one of our kids has their own leadership notebook, and they track themselves through iReady. They track themselves through Common Assessments. So, for myself, for example, I work very closely with our other seventh-grade math teacher, and he and I come up with Common Assessments for our kids. And then we look at the data that we find in those. So, like, right now, we've just finished up our geometry unit. And so, we've looked at how are our students doing comparatively to each other in all the different components of geometry for the seventh-grade curriculum? And we compare that data, and we see who's doing well, who's not doing well. And then we have intervention time each week that we can pull in students from any of our classes. And so, I work with his kids, he works with my kids, and we work together. And that is just sort of an example of what's happening throughout our entire school, right? And so, we're trying to, again, work with our kids as a whole. We have the Professional Learning Communities or Committees, just like all the other schools, and we're talking about the data. We're talking about what's happening. But we're trying to really emphasize how to meet those kids where they are and then how to have them take ownership of their own learning. One of our other goals is to work really closely with their families. So, we're still working with our advisory contacts. So, all of our students are broken down so that each teacher... I shouldn't say the students, but our student body is broken down so that each teacher has about 12 to 15 students that they're responsible for contacting families eight times a year and having meaningful conversations with those families about what their kids need and how they're progressing in their academics. So, we're still doing that. And then we're trying to just sort of build the momentum and enthusiasm for being back in school with our kids. So, we've started our Maroon Meetings again. I don't know if any of you remember those from before, when you guys could actually come in and see them. We're not doing them in the auditorium because of COVID. But the kids are going outside. They're... Like, today, they were throwing hard-boiled eggs at each other, and it was a big competition between all of the grades, and they were having fun. And we watch it livestream from our classrooms, and they scream, and they yell, and they cheer out the windows. And so, it's just, it's trying to rebuild that environment because I think we lost a lot of that with the time that we were specifically out for COVID. And so, we want the kids to be enthusiastic about being at school. We want them to be learning. We want them to be engaged in what they're doing. And I think all of the things that are in our school improvement plan are designed to motivate us and to keep the kids on track. So, that's... I think that's probably where we are. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that we needed to go... Oh, and we're also still working on emphasizing our writing goal. We have a specific goal for our writing and encouraging the kids to do more critical thinking through their writing skills. And I would say that we would invite all of you to come, hopefully, wearing masks, or maybe not, if it's all covered up. But this spring, we do a leadership night, and so, our kids will be doing their data notebooks throughout the year and keeping track of their data. And then on that leadership night, we invite their parents and the community to come in and talk to our kids and let them, you know, show off what they're doing. And so, we hope that we can see you guys there then. Do you guys have any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Our high school?
Hi, I'm Ashley West, and I teach American History at the high school. This year at the high school, we are focusing on improving as a PLC at work across all our departments. Our goal by the end of the school year is that the collaborative team process becomes deeply ingrained in our school culture and becomes the engine that drives our school improvement so that the team process directly impacts the teacher practice in the classroom, helping each teacher clarify what to teach, how to assess, and how to improve instruction. We are also... Our goal also by the end of the school year is that the department teams honor collective commitments and have clarified expectations of how their team will operate and communicate to address problems if they occur. This also continues to go along with our focus on the NC Star indicators that have department teams develop standard-aligned units of instruction for each subject and grade level. We are also continuing to implement a tiered instructional system that allows teachers to deliver evidence-based instruction aligned with meeting the needs of students across the school. In order to meet our goals, Swain County High School has formed a Guiding Coalition Team that helps drive, facilitate, and structure the PLC process. We have built in time with department PLCs to support the building of Common Assessments and data dives to drive instruction. We have also changed when in our schedule to allow for weekly interventions with Core Preps, makeup and reassessments, extensions, study halls, and clubs. We are using the Flex Time Manager to help facilitate this and structure this each week with the students. Learning targets are posted and visual throughout the entire lesson in each teacher's classroom, as well as scoreboards of data that allow students to visually see their growth and track it. We have included celebrations for students at the end of each data cycle so that we can acknowledge their growth and success. Thus far this school year, just in quarter one, we have seen growth in students across the school. Students are responding well to weekly interventions, and some even ask to join interventions even if they're not needed that week. Parents likewise have responded well, liking that there's a system already in place to help guide their child if he or she is struggling. We are also working to blend our Leader in Me work into this PLC process by developing department goals to track data and growth so that these become seamless in the way we do business rather than standalone groups. Also, our faculty lighthouse team is focusing on Habit Seven, which is sharpen the saw in the habit of renewal. And we continue to focus on distributing leadership and collaboration across the school as it is our Department PLTs, MTSS, the CARE Team, NC Star, Leader in Me, and the Guiding Coalition. Do you have any questions?
I have a subject I can understand. History teacher here. Good presentation.
Thank you.
You have all of those plans, and when we move into the action section of our, of our meeting, we would ask that you would approve those, please. And if you have more questions, we can get answers for those. Those are all of the presentations for the improvement plans. We would enter into our discussion time now, Mr. McKinney, and I believe that you have requested that we go into closed session now.
Do I have a motion to move into closed session for? I think one item, maybe? All right, all in favor by a show of hands? All right, we'll be back hopefully shortly. All right, we're ready to start back, so thank you for waiting. If you would, working. All right, Mr. Say, if you would, let's continue the end with.
We have an opportunity to provide COVID testing onsite through a contractor. This will be available for students and for staff. It is by consent only for students and staff. So I don't want anyone to walk away thinking that we are going to mandate testing for anyone at this point. That is not our intent. What we're trying to do is to provide an opportunity for our families to perhaps save a step and maybe even save some money. Mr. Sutton, Dr. Sutton has been looking into this, and I would like for him, if he would please, to come and to talk about the opportunity, what's the name of the country, the company?
Concentrix.
Concentrix.
So NC DHHS has set aside some money for districts to provide free testing to students and families that consent. There was three options for us to get in on. One was we hire additional staff, they provide the test, and, and we do it independently, or we could go with a contract company. And the contract company had two options. One was pool testing, and the other one was just symptomatic testing. So if my daughter Sarah Beth was to be sent into the nurse's office, and I had consented for her to be tested, if she was showing COVID-like symptoms, the, the nurse would give her a test kit. The students test their cells under the direction of the, the nurse. They package it up, send it off, and we, if, could potentially save a doctor's appointment if it come back positive. Now, if the student's symptomatic and the test comes back negative, you have to have an alternative diagnosis before you can come back. So the parents would, at that point in time, have, still have to go to the doctor. But we have Blue Ridge Health. We've got a partnership with them. They do tele, telehealth. Actually, my wife participated in the telehealth appointment today. And then they have drive-by testing. They can test for flu, strep, and COVID at the, at the middle school through, at our Blue Ridge Health facility. But yeah, we will, can contract with Concentrix, and they will send us test kits that, and a, and a consent, and we would send this home. And just basically like we do with Blue Ridge Health right now, parents can consent to their child being seen at Blue Ridge Health. Parent could consent that their child receiving a COVID test at school. So again, Sarah Beth shows up, they would call, hey, you've consented, we would like to administer, would you like to, for us to administer this test to your child? We send it off, and then they send us the test results back in twenty-four to thirty-six hours. It does provide some logistic things that we're going to have to work out if we, if we pursue this any further, but it is an option. We thought it would be a positive for families that can't, maybe have a hard time accessing medical providers, and if the student was positive, it was a free test that way. Could potentially save a little bit of money. But it's, we're not, we are not committed to anything at this point in time. We've had just an information gathering session that Mark and I and our school nurses sat in on, and we thought it was important to share that information with you. I give two handouts in your packets. One outlining the three options. The option on the, on this box, the colorblind man can't tell you, that is with, if we were to staff ourself, that is not an option for us, period. I don't think, it'd be hard for us to hire. So we, the two options we have is the pool testing and then the symptomatic diagnostic testing. I can go into the pool testing if you're interested. I think the diagnostic, symptomatic diagnostic testing is what we were most interested in when we heard the presentation. And so they provide the test, our school nurse or anybody could give the test to the child. Child just swabs their nose three or four times each side, they drop it back into the, the package, drop it in an envelope, mail it off. And lab partners is what, who are, who would do the testing.
The results for that are somewhere between twenty-four and thirty-six hours.
Twenty-four, thirty-six hours.
Right. Yep. I don't know that that mandates or requires a, an approval. Does it, Brandon?
It, it, I don't think it would require a vote, but we just, we wanted your feedback if we pursued it any further, I think.
And, and again, I'd want to add, it's by consent only.
Yeah, and, and the only times if, you know, like, my daughter showed up symptomatic, had symptoms of COVID, they would, and I had consented, they could notify us, and the way they could test my child right there is I come to pick them up.
All right, questions?
Any questions about it? And, and again, it is free.
When would it start?
Three weeks from the time we email them back to say that we're interested. I think it was three weeks.
I think we're ready to do that tomorrow.
Two to three weeks, I want you to commit. They'll do some onboard training, they send you a packet of material, they send you some tests to get started, they send some basic PPE with that, that's all covered by DHHS. So it's not going to cost us anything. It'll be a little bit more burden, it'll be some burden on our nurses, but we're looking to get them a little bit of help. They're working themselves very, very hard right now.
Okay? Right. In a little while, we'll be voting on the consent agenda. You see what the items are there in that. You'll notice that the title plans are listed. Regina said we normally just approve those, and if you have any questions, you can email her, Regina Ash, and she'll be happy to answer them for you. Okay? Other than that, that's all of the discussion, and we're ready to move to action. So Mr. McKinney, I recommend that the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Ashley Barker as teacher assistant at Swain West Elementary effective October nineteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Brian Thomas as boys' basketball assistant coach at Swain Middle School.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Lane Crisp as custodian effective October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands?
Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Amy Smith as school nurse at Swain East Elementary effective January seven, twenty twenty-second, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two. Sorry.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands?
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the retirement resignation of Jeffrey Stevenson as EC teacher at Swain West Elementary effective January first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education accept the resignation of Darrell Laney as bus driver effective September seventeenth, twenty twenty-one.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands?
Motion carried.
I recommend the Swain County Board of Education employ Travis Stevenson as girls' basketball assistant, assistant coach at Swain Middle School.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? All right, motion's carried.
As a point of information before the last recommendation, we will be transferring Tyler Schuler to Swain East Elementary to become the dean of students and work with Amanda Sutton. So there will need to be some movement on that at some point soon, okay? I recommend the Swain County Board of Education approve the consent agenda, including the NC Star improvement plans, the additional title plans, the masking approval, and the minutes of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one regular meeting and the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one closed session.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor by a show of hands? Motion's carried.
For the record, that left the masking approval the same as it has been in the previous month. Okay? Days of importance, October fourth is Teacher Work Day. Mandated Teacher Work Day was October fifth, PLC was October sixth. You heard our staff talk about how they're using those, those data team PLC days and how valuable those are, and that's why they're in the calendar. We, we really couldn't get them in any other way. You'll notice that there's a PLC work day on November the twelfth, and also there's a three-hour delay on October the twenty-fifth. We're doing that so that we can get our students in for at least a half a day worth of work that day, okay? And then there's a holiday on November the eleventh. Novus, who is doing our facilities study, has been onsite and spent a, a good amount of time looking at all of our facilities and what our needs are, and they are prepared to come in to talk to us and to say, okay, so what are your priorities now? After they've show us everything. They would like to meet with us on October the eighteenth at ten thirty. We can have two board members attend that. Just as an information session, this is not a committee that's going for any approval or any other reason other than just information. All right? And so, Mr. McKinney, at some point, we would need to know who those two people, you might like to be on October the eighteenth, which is next Monday, I believe.
It's this Friday, the fifteenth.
Pardon me? I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get it on your agenda. They emailed, and they need to change that to October eighteenth. I apologize, Kim.
That is the eighteenth.
Yes.
Ten thirty. If any of you are interested, I can probably be there, but if anybody's interested in being there too, let me know. Or two of you want to be there, I'll go somewhere else. I don't care. So just let me know, and we'll, we'll work that out.
Our next board meeting is November the eighth unless something comes up.
Anything else? I do have a packet here, if any of you want to take it and look at it. It is from the lottery in the state of North Carolina and where the lottery funds go to. It's a pretty good packet. It's easy reading, it's colored and all that stuff, so it's a, it's easy read. If anybody wants to look at it and then get it back, and we'll, anybody wants to see it, we'll pass it around, so whoever gets it first will take it with them. Anything else?
All is on the agenda, sir.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
All right, all in favor, stand up and adjourn.